Smiling faces around the, uh, the table right now and, uh, you're going to have to put up with me as, as host this morning, folks. Um, uh, Lisa is at the, uh, see if I got the name of this right, the Western Association of Chamber Executives. Meeting, this is a conference in Arizona. So, um, uh, I'm going to be subbing in. And we'll have some updates from the chamber from Lisa a little bit later on, I'll provide those, but to, uh, I think we could probably go ahead and get started with some introductions. I did see an old friend of mine, Marilyn Roth. Her name was on the screen here just a little while ago. Now, I don't know if she's trying to rejoin or not, so, uh.
It's mine somehow. I, sometimes I use the church stuff Zoom and sometimes my own and I, it gets mixed up. So I just changed my name for Marilyn. Apparently I'm on the church one, so.
Okay. Oh, you see Marilyn, tell her I said hi.
Yeah, I thought she was on here too to start with, and then I realized it was me.
Okay. Let's go around the, uh, the table with, uh, introductions, organizational updates, uh, you know, as, as Lisa says, just a brief update, but for the good of the order. And then we will go into our guest speaker, Commissioner Schwartz. And I'm going to start with, uh, Bill Lennox.
Oh, good morning, everybody. Um, I'm, um, speaking with, uh, well, I'm, I'm on the board of Six Rivers and we are, like I said earlier, we're making some really strong changes. We have a new office up in Goldendale. Um, this has been a pretty strong week. I, I happen to be scheduled to be on the KODL, uh, on Monday, and that's when we learned about John Frederick's passing, sudden passing, and that was a real shock to everybody, I think. Uh, considering the fact that he has been on the radio, uh, subbing for Al Winn for so long. So with that, it started, uh, the week has started out kind of on a somber note, but other than that, um, I'm here to listen to Kathy and get updates on what's happening with the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I'm sorry. I had not heard of that. That's a rough way to start the week.
Yeah.
Stacy?
Uh, Stacy Cooper, Cooper Orchard's just here to listen.
Brian Tuck?
Brian Tuck, retired?
No, you're not. Julie?
Julie Reynolds, um, Fort Dells Museum Commission, St. Paul's Episcopal Church, you kind of general community volunteer.
Dave Peters?
Good morning, everybody. Dave Peters, Columbia Casket Housing, Mid-Columbia Housing Authority. Again, we do all things housing, so any questions, keeping a house, saving a house, preparing a house, send them our way. Thanks.
Thank you, Dave. Dennis?
Uh, good morning, Dennis Knox, Mid-Columbia Medical Center. Uh, again, I appreciate everybody's patience as we're, uh, transitioning, uh, at Mid-Columbia Medical Center. Um, uh, as it pertains to our recruitment efforts, we have, uh, fourteen primary care providers ever, ever since, uh, we were allowed to recruit in mid-December fourteen, uh, that we're recruiting. Uh, we have had three sign-on, uh, starting around May first in primary care and in Solilo cancer center, medical oncology. We have a Dr. Aiko Clamont, a medical oncologist, starting on Valentine's Day, uh, February fourteenth, joining, uh, a nurse practitioner, Robin Seuss, who has been with us for quite a while. And, uh, I'm not going to name names, but I made another offer last night that I think will bring on another physician, medical oncologist, um, imminently. So, um, making a lot of progress in this transition. So again, I appreciate everybody's patience and, and I know you value the relationship you have with your physicians. Thank you.
That's good news, Dennis. Thank you very much. I appreciate the listening sessions, too.
Very good. I, I figure, uh, Travis will elaborate on that, so.
Alrighty. Thank you, Dennis. Scott? Scott, you are muted, sir.
Thought I got it. All right, there I got it. I do know how to answer this. Oh, is it McKay?
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott McKay. I should.
Oh.
Be more specific here.
What are we talking about?
Oh, my God.
We're talking about Scott McKay here, and then I'm going to go to Scott Stevenson.
Okay, there we go. I'm out.
Okay, the first one. Okay, first Scott. The, I, Scott McKay, Director of the Mid-Columbia Senior Center. I just have to say something to Dennis that I was reviewing, trying to get all files together at the senior center. And I went back to the strategic plan we had maybe twelve years ago, when Hal Sessions, Dr. Hal, Hal Sessions was our board chair, and one of the goals was to help MCMC recruit primary care physicians. So it's been, uh, this reminded me, it's been a long, you know, journey, always trying to look for those primary care physicians, so. So it isn't just now.
I appreciate that, Scott. It, it does come and go.
Yep.
But, um, we're, we're getting there. Thanks.
You're welcome. And then the other thing that we're doing is we are helping with the AARP Tax Aid Program that is annual and in the past it used to be, people would just come down to the basement and sit for a couple of hours to get their taxes done. It's now, it's once again, it's kind of a hybrid again. You need to call to make an, you need to email gorge tax aid at gmail dot com to schedule, to make an appointment. You, you email, uh, Stephen at, at that address, and then they will get back in touch with you to schedule a time. And once again, that's gorge tax aid and it's A-I-D-E at gmail dot com. Or you can call the center, we can call the center and we'll help you get on.
Scott, would you go ahead and put that, um, uh, that website and your phone number in the, in the chat box for folks?
I, I will do that. Thank you.
Excellent. And now Scott Stevenson.
All right, thank you. Sorry, uh, adding confusion in the mix.
That's okay, confusion on my part. Go ahead.
Hello, it's, uh, Scott Stevenson from the Dallas Arts Center. Um, we're excited. We have an exhibit, um, that's going to be opening on Friday. It's, uh, with Crow's Shadow, um, and this is a printmaking studio that was founded in Pendleton. Um, it's based in Native American artists, um, in printmaking. They have a master printer there. And so we have this exhibit opening. It's going to be a two-month exhibit, uh, with lots of programming. One of the artists actually was, um, it was selected for the Whitney Biennial, which is a, um, national recognition. Um, probably one of the highest that you can receive. So we're very excited about the quality of work and the programming that's going to go along with it. So there's certainly going to be some, uh, information coming about that. So, thank you.
Excellent. We look forward to that. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Travis Dre.
Hey, good morning, everyone. Travis Dre, Director of Business Development with Mid-Columbia Medical Center. And yeah, Dan, appreciate the comments on the listening sessions. We are getting some tremendous feedback on the interaction, the engagement, the discussion. And so these listening sessions are being held, um, with our community members as well as our employees. So for those of you that received the link and passed it on to, uh, friends, neighbors, colleagues, et cetera, we greatly appreciate it. Um, we will be excited to share the findings of the listening sessions as soon as, uh, our Gerard team gets a chance to kind of, uh, go back, revisit, categorize them, and then, um, we'll share them with the public as well as a timeline on our strategic exploration process. So we're putting a lot of transparent, transparent material together to make sure everyone understands the journey that we're on and, and kind of how that's, uh, unfolding. And then as well, we'll, we'll have some exciting, um, we have some exciting news coming up. We have, uh, Don Wensler, our, um, chief nurse, our chief nurse officer, uh, he'll be on NPR, uh, talking about just the, um, uh, just how the surge has truly affected rural healthcare, and they've kind of selected MCMC because of our, our story and, uh, our bandwidth, and, um, it'll be, he'll be sharing a lot of comments and information on there. So we'll keep, as we get the information, we'll share that and just appreciate everyone's patience as we go through this.
Thank you very much, Travis. Appreciate that. Phil, Philip Brady?
Good morning, Phil Brady, also with MCMC. I'll just add that, uh, Dr. Wally Wolf retired from our Board of Trustees after thirty years. We gave him a fond send-off and we all appreciated his efforts over so many years. I personally might need to just blank my video here. I had parent conferences last night, so I need to get myself ready for teaching today.
Thank you, Phil. Corliss?
Good morning, everyone. Um, this morning, I would like to say Wasco County Cultural Trust Coalition awarded seven grants. And we're going to, um, announce the grants. We're having a little reception at the Arts Center on February fifteenth at six P M. So we gave, uh, probably close to over ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, Corliss. Go ahead, and if you'd like, go ahead and put the date in the chat box, too, so people can get that on their calendars. Appreciate that. Counselor Richardson?
Good morning, Dan and everybody. Thank you and Richardson, the Dallas City Council. I don't think I have anything particular to report this morning. Just glad to be here and to see you guys.
Alrighty. Tanya?
Good morning. Tanya Bromley, Northwest Natural. Saw Dennis yesterday as I was doing the listening session, so, um, I think that was really well received. Uh, the group we were in, I think they definitely want some more sessions. So just note to self, there's lots of eagerness in folks, uh, in the community voicing their opinion. So that was a great start.
Thank you, Tanya. Stephanie?
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, just fine, Stephanie.
Okay, wonderful. Sorry, I'm, I'm currently sitting at the bus stop waiting for the bus. Um, so Stephanie Bowen with North Wasco County School District. Um, and I am excited because starting tomorrow, uh, the school district is officially kicking off our own strategic planning process, um, that we'll be moving forward with through the next several months to really, um, solidify our goals, mission, and vision and values, um, for the coming years. So I'm super excited to get that underway for the district and see how that will, um, collaborate with all the other exciting things going on in the community.
Stephanie, may I follow up with you on that from a college perspective?
Yes, I would love to.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. We have Dawson Quentin.
Hi, everyone. My name is Dawson Quentin. I'm the, uh, Legislative Director for Representative Greg Smith, and this is my first meeting, so I'm just excited to be here and just listen in and see what you guys have going on.
Excellent. Dawson, thank you for joining us. I'm going to give a brief update from the chamber and also from the college, and I'm going to turn it over to our guest speaker, Commissioner Kathy Schwartz. First off, from, uh, Lisa at the chamber, again, again, Lisa apologizes that she is unable to join us this morning. She's in Arizona to the conference. But from my sloppy notes, um, bear in mind that the Sportsman Show is going to be February fifteenth in Portland. Starting that week and, uh, the entire week, um, Lisa invites, uh, organizations, businesses to, uh, keep that in mind. She'd love to have businesses join us, join her down there at the Sportsman Show, and also if, uh, you could be thinking of, uh, items for her gift basket. And then in March, they're going to do it all over again in Redmond. So keep those things in mind. From a college perspective, again, Dan Spots, I should introduce myself, uh, Capital Projects Director for Columbia Gorge Community College. Big focus right now is on affordable childcare. We are in the midst of a series of planning discussions to see if we can develop, construct a public childcare center in the Dows, probably on the Dows campus. We're also looking at a distributed model, uh, placing facilities in Hood River and Cascade Lock. So massive undertaking. We have capital facilities dollars to, uh, get this started from the state. Um, and, uh, we've got a feasibility study we conducted last year, and right now the focus groups are, uh, looking at potential next steps. So if you're interested in that topic, please let me know, and I would be happy to loop you in. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Kathy Schwartz, Wasco County. Kathy, take it away.
Okay, well, good morning, everybody. It's really nice to see you all. Um, I'm actually looking out this window at this beautiful sunrise. Um, I don't know if any of the rest of you can see it, but it really is gorgeous. So thanks for getting me up early this morning to, to fully take that in. So, um, you know, I've been on this several times blabbing away, so I thought, you know, maybe this time I would just take a moment and see what questions you might have, um, before I, you know, I can certainly blab for sure. But I thought I would see if you all had some specific questions for me that I could address. So I know it's early, but, um, fire away. I know, I know Brian might have some. He always has good questions for me. So what do you think?
Folks, feel free to ra- raise a hand or just jump in. What's going on in Wasco County that we'd like to know about?
All right. Well, it's obviously early for all of you as well. So, ah, Dan, you unmuted.
I did. Can you, you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Uh, say, I know, uh, you have a full, nearly a full year left, so this might sound premature, but of your three years on county commission, what would you say have been some of your, the highlights? Some of the things that are worth reflecting on a little bit?
Oh, wow, that's a, that's a good one. Yeah. Um, you know, I think, um, probably the biggest highlight was getting elected, to be honest, and, um, I think also, um, being so very proud. I, I don't know if, how many of you hang out in the courthouse on a regular basis, but if you go up onto the second floor, um, and look to your left, there's what I call the Wall of Men, um, all the photos of past, uh, county commissioners and judges, and, um, there is only one female photo, and that is mine. So I am quite proud. I, I'd actually like to change the photo because it's not my favorite, but it is really nice. Um, and I think it's really important that when young women or women walk up into the courthouse, um, th- those photos are of past county commissioners and judges. I don't think everyone really realizes, you know, who those people are. Because we've certainly had some other, like, we've certainly have a female judge right now, but she's not a county commissioner, so therefore photo's not up there. And, and the women don't really know what that wall is all about, but just that they have one, one woman that they can look at and say, oh, okay, I could be up there, too. So that, that really is, um, I'm really very proud of that, and I'm proud of our community for electing me for sure. And, and, and one other thing, um, I'm really not the only woman up there. I am the only eight by ten photo up there. But when I was first elected, I insisted that, um, we get a photo back of Sherry Holliday, who was the very first female county commissioner, and because of not having enough space and having to prioritize who they put up, um, they, they had taken her photo down, and I, I really pushed hard to get it back up there, but it's only a teeny tiny photo. And I think, I think she's actually right next, sitting right next to Bill Lennox, and I'm not sure who else. Um, but they agreed to put the last, um, group of county commissioners before they changed, um, the format where we didn't have judges anymore. So I know Scott and Bill know exactly what I'm talking about, but she's only about this big. But, um, I'm really proud that at least I got her back up there, and, and she did pass away a couple of years ago, and that was very sad. But she really was the first, the first one. So thank you for allowing me to elaborate a little bit on that. Um, I think one of my goals when I ran for office was to increase, uh, I felt transparency of the county commission. Um, just, you know, we meet up in this little room. It's very small. Um, nobody really knows where we meet, and, um, it's, um, not, I didn't think very inviting. We would often have maybe one or two people from the community join our meeting. And I, I really wanted to, um, you know, kind of enter into the twenty-first century and see if I couldn't get, um, at least our meetings to be recorded and put out on the internet for folks, and I, um, pushed pretty hard for that. And that was, you know, change is hard for folks, and, um, I pushed. And folks who have worked with me know that, you know, once I get stuck on something, Scott McKay is laughing, um, you know, I, I don't let it go because I really felt, you know, I campaigned on that and it was important to me. So finally, we did start, uh, having our meetings recorded and at least posted on our website. And, um, and I started posting them on my Facebook page so that they were actually pushed out. People didn't have to necessarily come in and get those. But then, you know, everything changed with COVID, so, um, we're now really transparent with being on Zoom videos and everything's recorded and, and I did eventually get Wasco County to actually open a Facebook page to push those minutes out and push our agendas out. Um, it's, it's, it's not a very robust Facebook page. We have to start small changes, you know, like we, I said earlier, it's kind of hard for people. Um, but, um, you know, one of those little silver linings of COVID, it really moved us along that transparency, uh, line for sure. So I think we're about as transparent as we can get now, and, uh, for a very short time, when we did go back last, I think, early summer, we went back in person, we made sure that we have now a hybrid, uh, situation where we're in person, but we also have a Zoom computer. So people from South County can join us, uh, remotely. You can join by phone. Um, really, really accessible at this point. So I'm, I'm really proud to have at least made that initial push. And, um, and now we're really where we need to be. So, uh, definitely that. So I think, um, and I think I'm, I think I'm really, uh, satisfied with the board positions I'm on and some of the work that I've been able to do out in the community with the various boards that I'm on. So, um, I can get into that a little bit. So how's that, Dan? Okay, um, anybody else have any questions now that Dan has broken? Ah, there's Brian.
So Kathy, how do you see land use planning in the future in relation to agricultural lands? As we go forward, obviously, there's always the push to, to break up agriculture, I mean, productive lands into ranchettes, which is, is something that's always made me nervous over the thirty-five years of being with the university here. I guess it just, you know, agriculture is the backbone of this economy. It is, and it will remain that hopefully. And I think protecting ag lands to be productive and, and sustainable is absolutely vital. You know, I mean, it's great to have big mansions, but they're, you know, as far as doing anything towards the economy, they're, you know, worthless, basically. I mean, we have orchards and, and small grains and cattle and all these things that are important. How do you folks see that down the road for the next ten, fifteen, twenty years?
Well, I think that we have a, uh, an amazing opportunity right now, uh, to get involved. You all do in that, Brian. And I, I, I hope that you do with your expertise because our planning department is just going through redoing their comprehensive plan. And, um, there's a lot of stuff out on their Facebook page. I don't know if you are on Facebook, but you can also go to their website. And it is quite, um, and they are very transparent with, um, what issues are coming up. We are, we are about to redo our, uh, our ordinance, basically, uh, piece by piece. And so a lot of you probably know that most of our land use is, is, is state dominated. They, they really have written the rules for, for most of Oregon's land use, but there are some flexible areas, um, that we have as a county that we can tweak with, and that's what we're going to be, um, we're going to be doing that this, this whole year. And so, um, it, you can get involved, you can put feedback in on their website, you can come to the meetings. You, and, and, and really, you know, talk to us about what, what you think we should be doing. And, and the beauty of it is you don't have to come and talk about the entire ordinance. It's coming to us piece by piece. And so, um, really great opportunity this year, Brian. And honestly, you know, I don't know where my colleagues and I are going to land on each specific issue until it, it really comes before us. And I have a, I have a moment to really dig into it and talk to folks and, you know, see what, you know, folks really want. And so it'll, it'll, it'll be a big year for land use planning. Yeah, thank you for that question. Anybody else?
Uh, Kathy, a couple of things. I just need to tell everybody that I'm on a couple boards or committees with Kathy, and she's definitely, she's been a spark plug and making significant improvements in both of those that we didn't have before Kathy came on. So I just want to, she's not just blowing smoke. She actually does send me some great changes. But that's not what I'm here to ask the question. Then there's North Central Public Health District. There's some changes. Gillum County is now out of it. And could, how's that affect Sherman and Wasco County as far as rest of the district?
Yeah, great question. Um, well, yes, so, um, as, as, I'll just give you a little history. So, you know, many of you know that I used to be the Public Health Director at Wasco County. And at that time, uh, public health was under the auspice of the county. And of course, um, at that time, Bill and Scott was, were my bosses. And, um, and I left in two thousand and seven, and after that, um, thank you. My husband just delivered more coffee, so get, you know, I'll, I'll be really fueled up here. So, um, in two thousand and seven, shortly thereafter, and I think, um, Bill Lennox was a commissioner then, um, you know, we, the, the health department formed a district. And as many of you know, we always worked with Sherman County on a contractual relationship. We were the only two county health department. Um, we were under Wasco County, though, but when the district was formed, it was decided to bring Gillum County in as well and become a, a three-county district. And great idea, great economy of scale. It was a way to get more state resources into the region because they weren't paying us enough just when we were contracting with Sherman County. It, it was great, and, and I think it, it served our citizens really well for the three counties for, um, several, several years. Um, but this year, unfortunately, Gillum County has decided that they want to form their own health department. And, um, it's, I say unfortunate because I think the timing is horrible. I mean, our health district is under so much stress right now, um, with COVID, of course, and they have been for two years running. And to actually now have to, you know, split off a county, redo all of our intergovernmental agreements, we have to redo all of our contracts. There's, there's so much work that has to be done, not to mention, um, you know, moving clients over to Gillum County and, and, um, and they want to do that by July first, and, uh, legally they can. And so, um, our plan is to, uh, continue to be a district and to, um, with Wasco and Sherman County, so we'll be a two-county district and move forward. And, um, you know, we are going to lose some funding, of course, um, in that. And, and I think, I think there's always a challenge when you have a regional service area. Just the geographic distance, you know, people do tend to wonder if they're getting all of the services. And, you know, I certainly sit on a board that has a, a large geographic, uh, distance, and Scott's on that with me, the Senior Advisory Board. And, you know, we often wonder, how can people from Umatilla serve our seniors, you know? And, and it is a challenge, you know, and I think that's what we're facing out in Gillum County. How can these folks in the Dows really serve, you know, our citizens? So we think we can, we can do it, we can do it better. And so that's really what we are dealing with, and, uh, you know, the administration at the health district is, is overburdened, but we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna get through this and, uh, come out the other end. And again, it does start July first of twenty twenty-two. Well, and we should have everything in place by then. Um, so I, I wouldn't see, um, any difference in your services here in, you know, Wasco or Sherman County. Um, but we are going to have a funding gap, and we'll see where that lands us. It's, it's unfortunate. Um, but it is what it is, and legally they can leave, and that's what they've chosen to do. So does that answer your question, Scott? And Bill, would you like to add anything to that? Because you're on my board. Thank you. I'm not my board, but I am Chair of the Health District Board. And Bill, I just recruited him a couple of months ago, and he's already been a wonderful asset to the board.
Thank you, Kathy. That's nice of you. Yes, I, I do. I can only add that the whole creation of the, the district was really primarily because we recognized that at the time that Wasco, uh, Sherman was only really getting the state money for one particular entity. And so by forming a district, we ended up being able to get a lot more funding through the state. Plus, it was all, another opportunity for Wasco County to be sort of an anchor county for some of our more, more rural counties and be able to offer services and to be more efficient about it. So having said that, though, I wonder, though, if in fact, um, the infusion of COVID money hasn't sort of moved things, uh, in this direction for a dissolution of this, uh, of the district. But I'm hoping that maybe that they're going to be able to be successful, Gillum County is, and that by doing this, so we can also, uh, become a stronger district, uh, in the end. So that's.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
I, I agree, and, and I, I have no doubt that we will, um, you know, just to, you know, I think the state back in the day was really encouraging this regional, um, service area. It's, it seemed, uh, very logical, um, the right way to move forward, um, because we have so many little rural counties that struggle to really, um, you know, have full-service health departments. And so I think that the state was. And so I think that the state was kind of edge, or, you know, kind of moving us, inching us into this direction, inching the whole state, like, look at what, look at what North Central is doing. You know, maybe some other regions would like to consider, you know, moving in this kind of regional direction as well. It never really, it never really went anywhere. North Central is the only regional health district in the state of Oregon. And, and quite unique in that way. And it is governed by the board. It's not governed by Wasco County. The board is the public health authority. So it is unique in, in those ways. And I think that has served us well in, in this time of COVID, when you might see in the news, county commissioners interfering with health districts and some of their messaging around COVID. And of course, my opinion is, you know, politicians have no business having opinions about science and health. So at the health district, we don't have that conflict. Dr. Mimi McDonald is in charge. So. All right. Any more questions?
Kathy?
Question.
This is Carlos.
Hi, Carlos.
I want to know what the timeline is for the SIP agreement. You know, the taxing entities were supposed to give approval and we haven't heard anything at the library.
Yeah, you should have recently received a letter from Matthew Cleves at the county looking for dates to get the districts together, to have that initial talk. And I saw a draft of that letter just the other day, so it's coming. I believe we have a date around March seventeenth to get our plan into Business Oregon. So it's a very short timeline to get agreement amongst the districts in the city and the county. I do believe if we need more time, I think from the city, well, I won't speak for the city. I will speak for the county, of course. I think we definitely want to have a very inclusive conversation. We want to make sure everybody's voices is heard, are heard. And that just might take more time than we have. And I think we're very open to asking Business Oregon for an extension and, and we'll likely get it if we need it. That's a lot, a big ask to get all these districts together in a room, get them to agree on something. And, and then come back to the city and the county in our public process, which never moves quickly. So we may end up with an extension on that, but if we may make the deadline, I don't know yet. Does that, does that answer your question?
No, I'll wait for the letter.
Okay, thank you. And, and congratulations getting appointed on the library district board yesterday. Again, in case you didn't know that.
I've been operating illegally for the last year, I guess.
Is this meeting being recorded?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Carlos, I believe that Matthew did send something out on Monday. I've been working with Matthew just on the location.
Probably got it. Jeff probably got it. And our board meets in a couple of weeks, so.
Okay. Great discussions. Other questions for Commissioner Schwartz? I would have one, and it's following up on an earlier topic on COVID. Especially from your background with the, with the health district and everything you're, you're, you're following now. Do we see any trends? We still see high numbers in, in Wasco County? This latest variant, Omicron, what's your, what's your guess? And where are we going? Do we need to? What's your guidance?
Yeah, well, you know, I'm watching the news. I'm watching, you know, what's happening around the world, nationally, statewide. And of course, you know, at the state level, we are seeing some numbers drop. We are seeing that. But what we're not seeing is those same numbers dropping in the rural areas yet. So the rural areas are lagging behind. And of course, when you look at the state numbers, you know, with, with the, you know, the larger cities having so much of the population, it skews that, that number going down. But when you look at it county by county, the rural areas are still quite high. And that's, and that's where we have the greatest number of folks who are unvaccinated. So it, it makes, it makes sense. But eventually I think we will see our numbers go down. I don't, I don't know exactly when, but we are going to lag behind what you see as a state level, you know, numbers. So keep that in mind. We're going to be behind that. What's also going to lag behind those numbers are our hospitalizations and unfortunately deaths. So of course, as you know, it takes a while for you to get infected, get really sick and then get into the hospital. So when you first have a positive test, it gets recorded. But you generally don't go in the hospital until you've been sick a while. And, and so that, those numbers will, will stay up. You might see our actual COVID numbers come down, but our hospitalizations will stay the same or, and unfortunately, our deaths as well, and definitely will lag behind. So, you know, if I put my crystal ball here in front of me, here, here you have a politician talking about, you know, what she thinks about COVID trends. And I'm definitely not Dr. McDonald. And, but I think we will start to see a decline. I'm optimistic and hopeful that we will start to see it go down. But what I'm not optimistic about is our, our folks getting vaccinated. So we have definitely stalled on the boosters. In Wasco County, we have more vaccine than we know what to do with. Our health district is so frustrated. And they are offering clinics everywhere and people are not coming. So it's very distressing to them. We have a FEMA trailer coming to our area. I don't have that information right in front of me. It's in mid-February. It'll be well-publicized by the health district. So this is the federal government coming into our rural area. They've been here before. They're coming again to see if they can't get more folks to come in, to get boosted. They bring their, they bring all the staff, the nurses, everything, the, everything. And so they'll be here for a week. And I, and the, the location is yet to be determined. But again, the district will have that pushed out everywhere. So that's just another effort. But we are at, I don't know, thirty-three, thirty-five percent of our population here in Wasco County is actually boosted. And man, it, you know, you gotta look at the numbers, folks. Look at those graphs of who's in the hospital and who's not. You know, so it's, it's so obvious that if you are vaccinated and boosted, you are so unlikely to end up really sick and land in the hospital. And unfortunately, that message is not resonating with people. And I think our health district is frustrated and they don't know what else to do. So we'll just keep soldiering on and that is their attitude and they will keep doing what they can do.
Kathy, as a nurse, I mean, and obviously in the middle of this, how do you see this playing out? I mean, you said, obviously, I mean, this is the disease of the unvaccinated really for most part. I mean, and then this is going to be the group of people who continue to get sick and, and ultimately sadly pay the price for this. Do you see this just kind of continuing like this until really people who aren't vaccinated ultimately either have some sort of, you know, don't get it or ultimately get it and get sick and, and ultimately develop sort of our herd immunity? You know, kind of like, again, the nineteen-eighteen pandemic with the flu. And ultimately this disease becomes endemic, which is, I think, the, the thinking that this is going to go. But it just, it's, it's going to take a while until people, this disease runs its course through those who are not vaccinated and don't have the resistance, but which is maddening. I mean, it's crazy in itself that this is even happening. But, you know, that's, we're Americans, we make our own choices and bad choices. And, but I just, it just frustrates me to no end. I mean, I, you know, we lived in Africa, in Sub-Saharan Africa, we took, I don't know, fifteen shots. What's the big deal about getting a stupid vaccine, you know, to keep you alive? But anyway, sorry, I'm, I'm getting frustrated here. But how do you see this play out?
Well, I, 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 I see it play out similar to maybe, and this is just my own opinion, you know, what do I know? But I, I see it play out similar to other things that have been possibly mandated in the past, like seat belts, for instance. It took a long time for people to accept that this was important for their individual safety as well as for the safety of the society at large. And, and here we are, you know? So I, it's, it's something new for our society. Certainly, you know, I've said this many times, being a nurse, as you mentioned, and of course, our hospital folks know this very well. I've had to be vaccinated my entire career, just to walk into the hospital and start to go to work. There are certain vaccines I have to have. And so, you know, this has always been mandated in, in my career. So it, it is, it's, it's nothing new for a lot of us. Certainly not new for children going to school. But this kind of worldwide pandemic with a brand new vaccine that, you know, we're asking everyone to take is, is new for a lot of people. And a big change, and of course, we can't downplay, you know, all, all of the misinformation that's out there and affecting people's decisions.
The psychology of reaching people who are refusing vaccination is really interesting. I'm, I'm gerontologist and have training in psychology. Obviously, we haven't been able to figure out a way to approach these people who are so certain that the vaccines either contain something dangerous or our government planned to do something horrible. But another problem with the unvaccinated is that it's allowing the virus to continue to mutate. And that is kind of a bad situation.
It is a bad situation. And I, I just want to like, you know, keep our fingers crossed. And, you know, I, I am painting a, a really sorry picture about the folks that are boosted in our community. But we do, we are, we are up in the seventies for people who have had, you know, who are vaccinated, fully vaccinated. And of course, those of you who are paying attention, we now have a new term. So you can be fully vaccinated with your two doses or one dose of Johnson and Johnson. But you are up to date if you have that plus a booster. So when I talk about up in the seventies percent, those are the folks that are fully vaccinated, but not necessarily up to date. And I think one thing that I hear a lot, and, you know, I try very hard, individual by individual, to help them understand. But there is this idea that, you know, especially with Omicron, people are just not very sick and they're going to get it anyway. And, and really not realizing, you know, that our hospitals are stressed. And, you know, people do get very sick, especially if you're unvaccinated. But they see their neighbor who's unvaccinated didn't get very sick. And so they, they don't really, I, there's just a, people just don't believe that they're actually going to get sick. Just heard, heard it yesterday, heard, heard somebody say that. And it's, 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 it's frustrating, but, you know, and I think the health district as well as myself, I just, you know, as things come up, I just try to talk to individual to individual about, you know, what I know. And try to help them through it.
I have a, I have a thought, and that was that I know that we have so many restrictions, unappropriately so with like HIPAA laws. But on the other hand, like you said, there's not enough information out to the public. This whole issue that most of the people that are in our hospitals that are in critical care and potentially going to die are folks that have been unvaccinated. So it seems to me like that particular piece of information needs to be out there, either through the hospital and they're, and maybe they're doing this already and, and putting that out in terms of their communications, but also with our media. They need to really be strongly advocating and showing the statistics about who is up at the hospital and who isn't. And, and I think that might help sort of draw this a little bit closer to folks than their realization that they're not Superman and this isn't just a normal kind of a flu thing. And their immune system is there to be an immune system, but it, some things are just a little bit stronger and you need some help. The vaccine is going to do that. So anyway, I just, I would like to see more media presentation regarding those, the people that are in the hospital. And I think we some, as we've seen, and I, and as I mentioned in the beginning when I was here, we did have a recent death. And, and, and I, and I know that there's been a lot of expression about those who choose not to be vaccinated. And, and unfortunately, sometimes it's a death sentence.
Well, in the long-term ramifications of people who do get it, who have long-term symptoms here, I don't, I don't think folks fully realize that. Yeah, you may get it and you may have a light dose, but you may have lingering problems for who knows how long. I mean, they haven't figured that out. So I mean, yeah, so you don't die. You may be, you may be incapacitated, you know? What is that the federal government is, is acknowledged the fact that there is, you know, disability associated with long-term COVID? And, and I don't think people fully realize that it's a Russian roulette game you play with this disease.
You know, it's a, my old college zoology professor, I remember his saying about certain individuals. I've got my mind made up. Don't confuse me with the facts. Kathy, you'd mentioned seatbelt law. It also comes with a pretty hefty fine if you're caught not wearing a seatbelt. I've got a question regarding a particular large retailer in town, and I won't mention them. But that, that's retailer. But they're always talking about a mask is required before you walk in our store. And the intercom is saying, you know, we require everybody to wear a mask. And then you see a bunch of people running around without masks. Where's the enforcement? And what can we be doing to encourage that particular store that has a lot of people walking through the door? I mean, we, a seatbelt with a, if you don't wear a seatbelt, you get a fine. Well, how about requiring people to show their vaccination card before they come into shop?
Well, you do, you do live in America, you know?
Well, I'm not going to wear my seatbelt then, you know?
Before I go to that, Dennis, did you want to respond to Bill at all? I saw you unmuted.
Right, I just wanted to tell Bill, it's at the local hospital, about eighty percent of the COVID positive patients at Mid-Colombia Medical Center are unvaccinated. And of course, twenty percent are the breakthrough cases that are vaccinated. But yes, the unvaccinated are a whole lot sicker than the, than the vaccinated. And it's a slippery slope trying to publicize that, of course. I, I do a monthly blog and perhaps I can do it via that element. But just wanted you to know, it's about eighty, eighty percent, twenty percent. And that's what we're seeing nationally as well. So you bring up a very good point. All these are, are very good points that are being making, being made. The, the state of Oregon peak in Omicron cases was supposed to be February first, a couple of days ago. And I think that was evident. And then it drops off as, as, as other places in the country have reached their peak, it drops off dramatically. So we are very hopeful it's going to drop off here. But, but Commissioner Schwartz is right. It, it does lag in the rural markets. That, that time period does lag.
Yeah, and I did want to follow up with that as well, Bill. You know, Don Wexler, is that his name? Did a wonderful.
Winsler.
Winsler. I'm sorry. Don't tell him I.
He's going to be talking about this on NPR as well.
And he did a wonderful piece on OPB, talking specifically about the challenges and the stresses at MCMC around COVID hospitalizations and in our region. And so I think the hospital is trying to get out there, telling people the facts about what's happening in our region, for sure. So to answer your question, Dan, I do believe you're talking about Fred Myers, right?
No, yeah.
Yeah, you know, early on, when there was a mask mandate, I think that you could have called OSHA and, and actually, I actually did that with Safeway and did get a response and as did Safeway, local Safeway. But now it, there's just so much non-compliance everywhere that I don't think we have any recourse. And I think the stores are frustrated. I think they would love for people to wear a mask and protect their employees, you know? But, you know, in this, in this culture we're in right now, I think there's a lot of fear. There's fear of violence. There's fear of more retribution towards their workers. fear of more uh, retribution uh, towards their workers. And it just uh, feels to me like uh, people are just throwing their hands up and hoping that most people do the right thing. And that's kind of where we're at. Um, I think, you know, social media, blessed social media, uh, certainly uh, amplifies uh, these instances that happen in our stores, and um, you know, it's hard for us to know, you know, how rampant is that? Um, but it certainly probably does scare the, you know, uh, heck out of store managers and store clerks to think that somebody could become violent if you asked them to wear a mask, and so I think that's just where we're at, and um, I don't know how long this mask mandate is going to last. Um, so I think the governor has a press conference today at noon, and I don't know if she will be addressing that, because I know that there's been some plea from the state for some public input on the mask mandate. Um, so I don't see that changing anytime real soon, but um, we might see that change later on in the summer, I I don't know.
Yeah, I know, it's a difficult, difficult topic, Commissioner, I appreciate it.
Kathy, I was just, um, I just got home from Hawaii, and there, it's mass ma, this restaurants have to ask for your vaccination card before you can enter. So restaurant we went to, we were asked for our vaccination card.
Yeah, I know, I I know that that's happening in New York City, I think some Portland restaurants, um, but it's not mandated in Oregon. Um, that's just not the culture here yet, um, uh, but it would sure make me feel more comfortable going to a restaurant. Uh, Travis, did you have a comment?
Go ahead, Travis.
Yeah, thank you, uh, thank you, Dan and Commissioner Schwartz, so I just wanted to kind of touch on some of the messaging that Bill had mentioned, and I just wanted to kind of uh, just give a little perspective on kind of where we are with some messaging, and you know, one of the things, I think for two years, our physicians, our nurses, and in particular, I just call out Dr. Nickel, did a magnificent piece with collaboratively working with OHA, and you take a respected physician like that, and who really tries to emphasize the goodness that the vaccine can provide, and as soon as that piece hits social media, uh, you have to feel for that man, because he was, his name was just kind of drug through the coals by the by the noise and the people who are just, you know, want to be against the process without any understanding, so I I feel like our physicians, you know, a lot of them went to the school board and made their case for kids and parents to wear masks, and they were ridiculed, so I feel like after two years of really pushing for the vaccine and pushing for the health of our community, they're kind of, their arms are kind of up in the air, like, what more can I say, what more can I do? And it it, they take this home, it's, it wears on them, and I think they've just kind of realized, like, I've used my voice, I've used my position in the community, I've used my education to the best of my ability, and some people are hearing it and and being, want to be a part of the change, and some people just want to take their name and put it on a social media feed, um, certain publications, and just just bash them for uh, the good that they're trying to create, so it's a tough ask right now to ask our physicians to put their neck on the line and continue this message, so I just wanted to share that. They they have definitely tried, they're definitely on board, but they're being very um selective about the vehicles that we ask them to um, participate in, and and I, we have to respect that for sure.
It's not fair that they should be in that position in the first place, we got off on the wrong footing on this thing three years ago, and we've been paying the price ever since then.
Yeah, I think um, really, um, you know, you all, most of you know, I come from a pretty strong medical family. And um, this is, this is new, I mean, you know, people used to actually listen to their physicians and respect them, respect their, you know, education, their background, um, really um, know that their physicians were doing what was right for them, and this is a new era where a physician says, I think you need a vaccine, and and someone says, I don't believe you, you know, I don't, I don't trust you. It's a new era, um, and we know it's all from misinformation out there, and so there, there we have it, so you know, obviously, COVID is a big topic on our minds today, so um, yeah.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't end on too pessimistic a note, we'll get there, we'll get through this. Other questions for for Commissioner Schwartz on other topics, have we not, have we covered everything, or are there other ideas out there?
Kathy, uh, Scott Skimson from the Art Center is just curious about um, progress with uh, the Homeless Committee or Houseless uh, work.
Oh, yeah, progress, well, um, I think did Kenny LaPointe visit you a week or two ago, some of you were there for, so Kenny LaPointe is another bright bright person in our community and is now running our Community Action Program, which I kind of now characterize as um, our community action in action, which is um, you know, um, it's really great to see, and um, and I am going to put in a plug since we have Dawson here, he's very quiet, but um, we do have a bill, and I think, I don't have it written down, Dawson, but I think it's four-one-two-eight, which is uh, allocating uh, about a million dollars to our region, uh, Wasco, Sherman, and Hood River Counties, um, for um, really trying to get a strategic plan and a strategic outlook on um really coming up with some solutions for our homeless community here in these three counties, and of course, uh, Kenny is spearheading this, and um, and so we are, at this point, we're in the short session at the legislature, and so we are advocating that our legislatures, um, you know, pass this bill. We are one of eight communities that are actually written into this bill to get a million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars for two years. And so um, Dawson, if you're still there, if you would pass that on to Representative Smith to be sure and advocate for that, I'd really uh, be very grateful. Um, so I think we're moving forward, certainly, this will be a big push, I think the Mayor's Homeless Committee is a good start, but it's, it it really, we don't have resources, we just talk and and, you know, do the best we can, and you know, try to come up with solutions, um, but actually putting some resources behind it and legitimizing the committee, uh, formalizing it, and um, you know, I think will will move us a long way in this direction, and and try to, you know, really get some help, and of course, Kenny probably talked to you about the Navigation Center that he's wanting to build, and I am a hundred percent behind that. And I'm going to be asking our county commissioners to contribute to that. Um, and uh, don't know where that will land, but we do have some funds, our American Rescue Plan funds, that we could use towards that, and I definitely am going to be advocating for that.
Thank you, uh, just a quick question about the COVID and this kind of problem, public awareness and this kind of backlash, I was just curious if there are any funds for public campaigns, um, I've seen some billboards, I've seen some of the signs, um, that I think ODOT or the city provided saying, you know, fifty dollars if you get a vaccine and and that type of thing. Just kind of curious if there was um, some way to kind of do more of a grassroots flyer campaign or anything like that, um, which has been kind of helpful for the Art Center, um, in terms of really engaging people, so just, just a I was curious if there was any opportunity there.
Well, oh, go ahead, Julie.
I was just going to say, there was money for that kind of thing earlier on, I'm on the board of H+ Foundation, um, which addresses the issues in the rural community of aging, and my organization sent out three waves of uh, large-format postcard with large print on it to try to reach people in rural areas to to come and get their shots, so there was some money available for it at that point.
I think there's still money available, and I think that is definitely, um, the Health District has used every format possible. Um, they've had listening sessions, they've done flyers, they have very active press releases on social media. Um, so I, they they do have money to do that, um, and yeah, so if you have any suggestions, please feel free to reach out to Shelley Campbell at the Health District, um. If it's not reaching you, you know, then, I mean, I'm bombarded, I am bombarded daily from messaging, so.
Yeah, okay, well, maybe I'm just new to the community.
Other questions for Commissioner Schwartz?
What's that?
Although, uh, whether there are other questions for you, Kathy?
Oh.
I've I've got a quick one on a different topic completely, status of uh, uh, the solar project down in um, is it?
Bay Coven. It's Bay Coven.
Bay Coven.
Yeah, it's it's um, it's happening, it's uh, the, you know, I think their construction crews are down there, um, yeah, it's it's a big project down there, and it's it's moving right along, so it's gotten past all the red tape and and all that, and so they are, they are in the construction phase.
Excellent, excellent, thank you, I think I mentioned solar, I I meant wind, but uh, yeah.
We don't have a wind project at this time, unless you know of one, I don't know of one.
Oh, I heard of some, something going on, but I probably got my geography off or something, thank you, Kathy, appreciate it. Other questions for the Commissioner? I know that Dennis had to, had to leave, and we're right up against time. If not, are are there any items for the good of the order before we close off? That being the case, we appreciate everyone's time. Uh, enjoy the rest of your week, Commissioner, thank you for joining us, wonderful talk, we'll, we'll solve the problems here, together, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Bye now.